All right, call to order. I believe it's Doug's turn for...
Sounds good.
Fledgling allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Padraig Feen.
Here.
Douglas Beebe.
Here.
John Fairchild.
Here.
Christopher Gadway.
Here.
Patty LaPlante.
Here.
Ed Maron. Nicole Pupour.
Here.
Richard Sears.
Here.
David Trudeau.
Here.
Okay. Resolve that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following agenda. They have a motion.
I'm motioning.
Chris?
I'll second David.
Any question or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So we will be going into a short executive session. We are going to invite Principal Barkome and Principal Bazile for the purpose of the employment history of a particular person or persons involved in employment. So, resolve that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss employment history of a particular person. May I have a motion?
Aye.
Padraig?
Yes.
You have a second?
Second.
Questions, discussion? Motion passes. All in all, favor?
Aye.
Get ahead. Okay. Resolve that the Board of Education return to regular session at 6:19. May I have a motion, please?
I'll motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, so we have some presentations. Retirement plots. Go ahead.
We had some phenomenal staff retiring here. The first person, elementary teacher with 29 years of service is Betty Bassett.
Congratulations.
And next we have with 25 and a half years of service, one of our phenomenal teacher aides, Paula Brockway. It is a lot of peers. Another elementary teacher with 22 years of service, Darren Carlin.
Congratulations.
And another elementary teacher with 22 years of service, Rebecca Ketchum.
Are there going to be any elementary teachers left?
Okay, 16 years of service. One of our teacher aides would be greatly missed as well, Yvette Manny. Very valuable staff retiring. We appreciate everything, all that service, and wish you well in your retirement. Now our ex-oficio student board member, Devin Bevo. Okay, and we have two board of education members. This is the last meeting. Mr. Douglas Beebe has been on the board.
Like the trophy. Six years.
And Nicole DeForsen has been on the board.
That's pretty cool.
I don't, I feel like we're not going to have any elementary teachers left. Put in some great years. Thank you so much. Moving on to public comment. Do we have anybody here for public comment?
Yes.
Okay. Guidelines are, say your name, and...
Right here. So my name is Victoria Peru, and I'm the PTO secretary, but also a model of two. Am I here?
Put it down a bit.
Is that better? I've never had the problem of anybody carrying me before.
I'm not hearing, I'm sorry.
I'm okay. I'm Victoria Peru, I'm the PTO secretary, and I was a model of two. I have a little boy who will be going into kindergarten, and a little girl who will be going into second grade. And I'm here tonight because I just have concerns on what exactly was going to happen with the playground during the construction. I've heard that girls could be able to play in the field, and I just don't think that I put enough. My son definitely isn't running in the field, will not help him at all. He needs help with fine motor, he's already in OT, and helping climbing and doing stuff like that helps him with his fine motor skills. Also too, he needs help with core, and just running in the field isn't going to help him that either. So I was just wondering what your, what your plans are for that.
Do you want to answer your question?
Well, so first, it's early on, of course. We're still working on approval for the capital project.
Right.
And that will be part of the discussions going forward, that, you know, what happens with the students in recess time during the construction phase, for sure. But I don't have a specific answer at this point. Does anything you want to add?
No, I mean, that's the plan. It's, I hope we come up with better things than just running in the field.
Right.
So there's a lot of very smart people here, a lot of very creative people here, much more so than I am. And there will be things for children to do during that.
Okay. When does construction start? And when will their plan be put in place?
When will, I'm sorry.
When does construction start? And when will plan be put in place? And what exactly do we know what will happen?
Construction will start for next two, a year and a half.
Okay. Oh, so maybe a year and a half?
Yeah, yeah. There's quite some time. It's a long process.
Okay.
So we probably won't start planning that until, until the bids were opening, which you're talking the end of 2024.
Okay. Sorry.
Definitely a legitimate concern. I think that, you know, there's a lot of creative people, they can come up with creative things. I know that that's a time where kids need to, like, expend some energy, but I think...
And not just to expend energy, like, it's how we, you know, work with each other in a imaginary way.
Yes.
There's so much just having a playground to play on, so I just want to make sure that those are concerned to gain that.
Well, we're, I mean, I think the goal is to definitely provide more rooms, but something might have to give a little bit, but there'll be some creativity in getting that done.
Okay.
And there's time to think about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, board of education members, acting superintendent of schools, and those in attendance tonight. Thank you, Doug, thank you, Nicole, for your service, and congratulations, everyone on this evening. I will be brief, abide by my public comment rules of not mentioning names except for my own. I did however make a break, a sacred scout motto, being prepared, as I should have called this in the middle of the day, part of the specific agenda. But in any case, I would want to fumble through some of my comments. My name is Mark Sand, I live at 1219 Jersey Swamp Road, and I wish to share a wonderful thing that I was able to witness and be a part of. For the past five years, I've been the proud scout leader here at 246 in Beaumont Town. I have scouts ranging from 12 years to 18 years of age, different Beaumont Town, NAC, and Peru school districts. Scouting continues to provide a worthy, warm back extracurricular activity outside of school, with activities such as camping, hiking, fishing, basic skills such as outdoor cooking, knot tying, and also public participation in community service, by leading the pledge of allegiance at Honor Flight Culver Hill Ceremony right here in Beaumont Town, the Rees Across America, and cleaning of the local cemetery of gravestones on Memorial Day. Also working with VFW for Thanksgiving and Christmas gifts, efforts, and various flag opening ceremonies and flag retirements. That's a lot. In fact, I'll be bringing a small group here to school tomorrow to participate in an elementary school program for Flag Day, to lead in the pledge and show proper folding of the American flag. Within scouting, there's a series of ranks with increasing levels of participation requirements, the highest rank being that Eagle Scout, the one that most people are familiar with. Fun fact, your board president, Mr. Maron, is not attendance this evening, is an Eagle Scout, I'll figure that. One of the requirements to attain his honor is to lead a service project that benefits a community organization, a religious institution, and for our school district. As you may hear from Mr. Bevo this evening, from happenings around our school district, one of our 246 scouts recently led an Eagle project where Cumberland Head Elementary School was that beneficiary. Last fall, I took a phone call from the Cumberland Head PTO leadership about the status of an old deteriorated bottle bin used on the grounds to collect returnable bottles, the funds of which are used to buy yearly school supplies and fifth grader yearbooks as they transition to the main building. Returnable bottles are one of the biggest moneymakers that the school has shared to me by the principal, or any organization for that matter. Shameless plug, we have a troop bottled bin box across the street in the fire department if you'd like to support our effort as a troop. The Cumberland Head bottled bin had aged beyond repair and was too small in a desperate need of replacement, to the point where overflow would just be placed beside it and would end up in the neighbors' yards with calls for cleanup. And it was asked that the troop or scout could take on such a project. One scout agreed, and he would lead the project towards the Eagle Scout range. The community support from friends, neighbors, and local businesses from the highest to the lowest donations really fueled this project's completion, with a bin delivery to the school last Tuesday. What didn't help was one of the rainiest, busiest times of the year, the spring forced three busiest school schedules of my boys, including my own Beaumont Town graduated Eagle Scout. Like I said, I'm not prepared to show you pictures this evening of everything that came together, but I'd invite you to check out this school's Facebook page as they recently shared a post. And I was informed that the board had seen some pictures, and I hope everything looks presentable to you. The Cumberland Head PTO can now effectively continue their mission of fundraising efforts for students with a new large-term robust bottled bin that will last for many years to come. We wish to thank the Cumberland Head PTO, Principal Duffinger, for their patience and trust to complete this project. If you're ever out at Cumberland Headway, be sure to drive by and check it out, and be sure to bring your bottles with you. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much. Some emotion? Much appreciated. Thank you.
He did a great job on it too. We got the photo. It was real nice.
Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Moving on to reports? Acting Superintendent of Schools?
No additional business reports.
No reports? Business manager? Any report?
I just have a few ELT funds for next year that have been approved. So that's at the same funding level that we were at this year, which is higher than previous year's. So that's all good news. The other good news is we've expended all of our ELT funds for this year. So all of our ELOs that we have in are all that's going to happen because we're out of money, which is a good thing. That means, kids have had tons and tons of opportunities to do various things. It has been amazing to see what has been offered this year. So those are all good things. Capital project, the PA system portion that's funded partially by SIRS, grant funds, has all been approved, so we can now start the PA system immediately. So I just found that out this afternoon. So we will be moving forward with the purchase order through day automation, and we will get work started ASAP, so that project can get underway. We are having an additional audit on the federal funds that have been given to us through SIRS and ESIR, and it's all the quote-unquote COVID money that we've been talking about for the last couple of years. It just came down the pipe that we're having a nice, large audit on that, July 17th. We'll have a virtual meeting. Everything is due to them by the end of this week. It's a massive undertaking.
At a very busy time.
At a very busy time. They want every copy of every contract, of every check, of every PO, of every invoice, and every payroll sheet. So that's a project we've been working on, we're going to continue to work on.
So all those fun things that have been, they've all been doing, you have to get all the paperwork, so?
That's an ELT, that's not federal funding.
Okay.
It's the COVID monies that they're doing the audit on. So we will be working on that diligently for the next couple of weeks. Negotiations, Holly and I have been working real hard on that. It looks like we're getting close. I'm asking, I don't know if it's on additional items to discuss, but we would like to schedule a meeting before July 1 if we can to ratify that contract, if we're at that point. Wondering if everyone would be willing to do so, if we could...
I apologize. Which contract is this?
The non-instructional, BSA, the non-instructional group.
Yep.
So if we can get a meeting together once everything is finalized, and we're literally like this close. I really wanted it for tonight, but we weren't quite done with the paperwork. So if everybody is willing, Chelsea could get out some dates once we know, and hopefully get together. It makes, if we ratify it in June, July 1, I can start all my 12 months of people where they need to be. I won't have to do retro checks, I won't have to do journal entries for approvals, and then reverse the approvals the following year, and so on and so forth. So it makes it much, much cleaner in our office if we can do that. So Chelsea will send out some dates.
It's not like you have anything else going on. So yeah, if you wanted to send out dates, we can...
Okay. See if we can get enough together, too. And I think that's about it.
Is this your final report?
This is my final report.
Take it a good one.
I know.
I don't know how you were going to talk previous one, but let's do it.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. This is, this is my last report, and it won't be shorter than any of us, so no problem. So for the high school, we are on the final stretch of the school year. The high school is extremely busy with final exams, regents, and end of the year events. Today, we had our senior captain gown distribution and our senior walk, where our graduating seniors were showcased by walking the hallway at the EES, the middle school, high school, and then took a bus over to CHES. Such an amazing experience for all of Fall. Today, we also had our end of year barbecue, where students had the opportunity to participate in yard games, crafts, and interact with their peers. This is also a great way to end the regular classes and move on to regents examinations. Regents exams begin June 14 and will run through the 22nd. Our teachers and staff work so hard to prepare our kids for these important state assessments, the regular fight will involve there. Additionally, we're having several outstanding events this week and next for our seniors. So first, we have our senior athletics awards banquet. It's going to take place on June 15 in the auditorium. We've got your CV tech and new visions graduation, which is going to be on Tuesday, the 20th. Senior scholarship award night is on the 21st at 6:30 in the auditorium. Senior parade will be on Thursday, the 22nd at 6:30, town ball. And then the graduation rehearsal is going to take place on Friday, the 23rd, in the morning, and commencing graduation at 6:30 the same day, Friday, the 23rd. On the athletics beat of war, if it rains, we're probably going to be in high school. And I'm extremely excited to celebrate the class of 2023, next two weeks. Their leadership will be great in this. And Mr. Bazile also made a really sweet bit at the end, but I'm not going to read it personally to you guys, it's really strange. So moving on to the middle school. Middle school is finalizing their school year with finals and end of year celebrations. The eighth grade moving up to our middle is going to be on the 22nd at 8:30 a.m. in the high school gym. The middle school band, chorus, and drumming club will perform. The sixth and seventh grade award ceremonies will be on the 21st, where students are going to be recognized for the hard work and commitment to academics. Students will also go on field trips next week. These include the eighth graders going to a Yankees game, seventh graders are going to enjoy a day on the beach with movies involved as well, and the sixth graders will be journeying to the caves. Nothing more than the caves, just caves. Beaumont Town Middle School would like to thank all the parents who supported us with their donations to BMS, through the Hannaford Schools Program. We are awarded an additional $1,000 as the top running school. Moving on to Cumberland Head Elementary School. CHES is abuzz with the arrival of our new bottle return bin, which is detailed, very nicely did by Mr. Sandin.
Oh, so fair enough.
Fair enough. So I'll read you the last portion of that, but the flourish portion of this is exactly what was said in that one, one double point scene. But lastly, we would like to thank Joshua Sand, the scouts, and the local businesses that made this possible. This includes Curtis Lumber, Warantire Service Center, Castine Properties, and CrossFit Class Center. The next time you're driving by CHES, please check out the bin and, of course, drop off your bags. And then I believe, lastly, we have DES. So the PDTO launched Teacher Appreciation Week with breakfast. Our culture team gave out fun treats during the week, and PTO provided a wonderful lunch on Friday. The PTO cake raffle and bingo night were also a huge success, so they appreciated students and families coming out to support DES and the PTO as well. On May 16, the fifth grade science fair took place. The team did a fabulous job bringing this event to life. They coincided with the budget vote, so we had a nice group that walked down after voting. The spring band and chorus concert on May 17 was well-attended, and the students did a fantastic job. Mrs. Boo's here held a pottery showcase also for our DES families. Kinder under through fifth grade students and families were invited to see all of the pottery created by our art students while enjoying some life refreshments. The artwork lined the hallways outside of each classroom. And other news, the May Eagle Pride Assembly and Eagle Pride Ice Cream Party focused on responsibility. 29 students were nominated by staff for demonstrating responsibility. The students were recognized during our assembly and then invited later to come with a friend to the ice cream party. Students in grades three through five completed their final PLTW projects with Mr. C in the library. They made lava lamps, created gum and candy wavelengths, designed their very own animals, and completed many STEM challenges based on fairy tales. Kinder under screening and pre-k, three, four screenings have been going on for the past few weeks. We are thrilled to welcome these students as DES eaglets. We welcome the Ned Show as well here on June 6. The focus was never give up, encourage others, and do your best. Pre-k through fifth grade, they enjoyed the show, pardon me. And then last few notes here. Hillary Aylers and the talent show committee put on a fantastic show on June 9, from drums, piano, and keyboard, playing to singing, dancing, and joke telling the students rocked the house. Lastly, as we're winding down our year with assessments and plans for the coming year, students and teachers alike are enjoying a variety of field trips. These include Wolf's Orchard, Corner of our State Park, Lake Placid Performing Arts Center, Grand Cole Lanes, Ossifopasm, Children Museum, Cumberland Bay Skate Park. That's all I have to do for that. That's it. That's all. I can add whatever I want.
We will certainly miss your report. Okay, moving on. Resolve that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. They have a motion.
Chris.
You have a second?
Second, Padraig.
Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolve that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSC, CPSC, and 504 recommendations dated June 13. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second, Padraig.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right. Consent agenda. Resolve that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, recall for eligibility, less than tenure, be and hereby, are hereby approved. We have a motion.
I'll motion. Second, Padraig.
Any questions or discussion?
Just, just a comment.
Comment?
Congratulations to those people receiving credit.
Yes. Congratulations. Thank you, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Yes. We have two? Okay. Okay. Miscellaneous. Resolve that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, sponsorship agreement for CV tech, adult education programs, school bus use for the North Country Honor Flight, contract Champagne Valley Family Center, side letter of understanding with BTA, modified track, side letter of understanding summer school 2023-24, revised school calendar, special education, school age summer school, BWW Boise, school bus lease agreement, athletic mergers be and are hereby approved. We have a motion.
I'll motion. I'll second, no.
Any discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolve that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, transfers, bid, chassis, mobile grants be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second?
Second, Chris.
Discussion or questions? Roll call vote.
Padraig Feen.
Yes.
Douglas Beebe.
Yes.
John Fairchild.
Yes.
Christopher Gadway.
Yes.
Patty LaPlante.
Yes.
Ed Maron.
Nicole Pupour.
Yes.
Richard Sears.
Yes.
Bond Resolution, section E.
Motion to move this in.
Thank you so much. That's a long one. Is that part of the other one? What is that? Oh, okay.
Two of them.
Discussion on that?
Second, John.
Who was it?
Doug Marshall made the agenda.
Roll call.
Douglas Beebe.
Yes.
Padraig Feen.
Yes.
John Fairchild.
Yes.
Christopher Gadway.
Yes.
Patty LaPlante.
Yes.
Nicole Pupour.
Yes.
Richard Sears.
Yes.
David Trudeau.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Bond Resolution. For the Beaventown and Lucasville District. David? Patty, second?
Yeah.
Thank you. They have a roll call.
Douglas Beebe.
Yes.
Padraig Feen.
Yes.
John Fairchild.
Yes.
Yes.
Patty LeFlem?
Yes.
Nicole Pupore?
Yes.
Richard Sears?
Yes.
David Trudeau?
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Does anybody have any additional items to discuss?
Yes. I sent out an email to the board a few weeks ago and it was talking about reimbursements for school lunches. There was a program that I saw through New York State, it's the farm to school program, where if you have, like, I believe it was 30%. If you get 30% of your produce from farms, you get a higher reimbursement rate. I believe it was up to 25 cents. Is that something we take part in?
We have applied before.
Okay.
In 1819. We did qualify. We got, started to receive the money. We were audited and we missed it by $6,000, so we had to return all of it.
Okay.
This is how this grant works, it's a little odd.
Okay.
We are applying, then COVID hit after that.
Sure.
So the whole world kind of tipped upside down. So we are, we're actually applying again this year. We have until August 15th, we've already done a majority of the work to see if we qualify again. Last time we did this, we qualified with milk, apples, and our yogurt. We're going to do the same thing again this year. Last time we missed it by about $6,000 because we estimated our apples to cost 25 cents and it only cost 15 cents.
Yep.
So we were off just by, it was like $6,000. So we just missed it. So we're going to try it again this year and see what we can do for us. It equates to, Russ and I were talking, I think it's 19 cents per meal for us, or for where we're at.
Yeah. So you only get the 25 cents if you're all the way at 30%, right? Is that tiered or?
For us, we get more A back than a lot of others do because we're.
Understood.
So for us, it would be a 19 cent increase per, and it's only lunches, it's not breakfast, it's not stack, it's just lunch. So if that happens, it would be great. So we may be approved, which I hope we will be approved, but then we have to be audited to make sure we meet all the caps that we have to meet. So that's how this program works. So yeah, we're doing it again to see where we're at.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good to go.
Last month, we had an after-prom party here at Beakman Town School that you kind of don't know the runnings of it. It takes a lot to get going. I want to thank the teachers, especially Tara Laura. She was running the whole committee's put together with the parents. Administration, Hannah Dial, Russell Barchette, Marcus Miranda, Dave Manning, many, many more that I have probably left out. Ashley Minor was very involved as secretary in the high school. The BCS Fire Department, the West AT Fire Department, the Cumberland Head Fire Department, District 3, the custodians, transportation helped us relieve the prom to get to Beakman Town School. The resource officer was here. We even had some coaches, the National Honor Society students helped clean up the next day. And last but not least, the local businesses who donated many prizes and lots, lots of money. Without them, this would not go on. It went from 11:00 at night to 4:00 in the morning. It was rough, but we did it. It ranged from movies in the auditorium to a huge bonfire in the back, to games, to all kinds of blow up obstacle courses, to volleyball, to quarter ball. I think our turnout was not like 50 maybe, 150, which is outstanding.
Was there a magician as well?
Yes, we did have a magician, which at first the kids were against, but every kid loved it. So, and food, like, there was enough food here to feed four junior classes. But I just want to thank everybody, this was a hit. I had a student involved and I knew the topic beforehand, like, this is boring, da, 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 da. Every kid loved it. So that's something that we have to keep going here. And it starts with a parent committee and a teacher that wants to get involved. So thank you, everybody who was involved.
Awesome.
Thank you, David. Anybody else have any additional items to discuss? Public comment? Anybody else like to say anything? No? No? Okay. We are having a, an executive session. Before we go into that, I would just like to say, I'm not a speech person at all. I'm not a great public speaker. But I do want to thank the staff at the school, everybody, like, everybody's been amazing. The board, administration, I appreciate the knowledge that I've gained from being here. I appreciate everything that everybody does. I mean, the school, the tremendous offerings, the amount of support. I was going to add donators to your thing, but you said that. So I just want to thank you very much. It's, it's, I have to move on with other obligations, so I appreciate whoever put me here and good luck to the rest of the board after the fact. So we are going into executive session and we are going to be inviting Dr. Davy. And that's it. And that's it for the purpose of employment issue of particular person or corporation or leading, or matters leading to employment, employment, demotion, promotion. So, resolve that the Board of Education appoint. Myself. As clerk pro tem, they have a motion. They have a second.
Second.
Discussion? There is no resolution coming out of this, Chris. Okay, there's not going to be any resolutions. So everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Going into executive session.